It went out. Robin?
I move approval of the agenda as presented with the HR addendum.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Correspondence?
At this time, I have no correspondence for you.
Anyone else? Correspondence to share? Okay, thank you. Recognition of the audience, there was nobody signed up. So, we'll move on to our non-signed up but official guest. Carol Johnson from the Fargo Public Schools and Foundation.
Thank you. As Dinah said, I am the Executive Director of the Fargo Public Schools Foundation and I'm here this evening to present our most recent annual report. And we are pleased to be able to continue to serve the district and raise funds for a variety of programs and projects. During the past three years, the foundation has been working hard to more than double our assets and we have been able to do that through our efforts, so we're very proud of that accomplishment. This includes also recently acquiring the Fargo Area Dollars for Scholars Program, which will provide for about forty-five thousand, forty-five one thousand dollar scholarships every year. And it is our hope, now that we have added that to our portfolio, that we will be able to grow that fund larger and larger every year. In the past three years, the foundation has also added fourteen new permanently endowed funds and investment income from, will provide additional funding for classroom teacher grants and scholarships for graduating seniors. And just, I added something here this evening that I thought would be noteworthy. During the past ten years of its existence, the foundation has raised over two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for the mid-morning milk program. We have raised over ninety-three thousand for basic and critical needs supplies for students. In the past ten years, we have provided over four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in classroom grants for teachers. And we have also provided over three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in scholarships for graduating seniors. In addition to that, in 2011, it's still an unknown fact to many in the community, the foundation established the Alumni Network a couple of years ago. And that network serves Fargo North, South, Davies, and Woodrow Wilson High Schools. And this includes assisting with reunions, maintaining an alumni website, and issuing a Courtney Lou's letter. And finally, the foundation also manages the Adopt a School Partnership, which brings over two hundred and fifty volunteers into classrooms to assist with reading and math tutoring and special projects, mostly in the elementary school. So, I think that you've all had a chance to take a look at our annual report, and I am wondering if you have any questions. All right. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to continue to serve all of you.
Thank you so much for coming out. Thank you. Now, we're at staff reports. FBA report, David.
I have no report tonight.
I'm afraid we're gonna have an awful lot of that, perhaps. Okay, well, thank you very much for coming out even without a report. Other staff reports. Rachel, start with you.
Well, I would just let you know that we are into the second semester. And when we get to the second semester of the year, we start planning for next year. And so, our high schools, middle schools will be getting into that process of scheduling and having students choose their courses. By the time we get to March, we'll be looking at staffing for next year. So, we are quickly moving through this year and starting to look to next year. And everything has started off well after the Christmas break, and so we're back at it. And it's good to be back here at the boardroom and after about a month off, so things moving forward nicely.
Brock?
Nothing at this time.
Brock?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Consent agenda. Chris?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Pass, thank you. Business. Board compensation. As you all know, several years ago, we mandated that once a year, we would review the board compensation in a timely manner, so that if any changes were going to be made, it could be incorporated into the budget process. So, if there was anyone who wishes to... ...related to this, now would be the time. Paul?
I move that we take up consideration of this at a future date to be discussed by our governance committee.
Want governance to review compensation, is that what you're...
No. I want the board to review compensation, but I moved that governance would help determine what date it would come up in the future.
Okay. Is that a form of a motion? Is there a second?
Much.
Second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion? John?
If I might, Paul, what, how would you visualize that looking or unfolding? A recommendation or them, or...
No, really, I was just looking for governance to set a date that it would come back to the board, because I didn't want to say, "Well, let's come back on March 17th," or "A second meeting in March," or, you know, who knows what our schedule will look like. But I think it would be appropriate, perhaps, to put it off for a month or two until we've had more time to study it and we have a better idea of what our finances are going to look like for the future, rather than I make a decision today, one way or another, that we might be ill-prepared to make. I just think, you know, we do it once a year, and sometimes we do it in January, and sometimes we do it at other times. And I think it would be, I think it's an important question and one that deserves some discussion and debate. I just don't know that we're ready to discuss it and debate it now, and I would rather see us do it, perhaps, late in March when we have a better idea of what our funding is going to be like for the future.
Discussion? Okay, we're voting to reschedule this item for another... Sorry, I should have popped in. I'm just puzzled, because I thought the first meeting in January... Always this meeting. How will March be different at that time? Imagine what's going to be... Uppermost topic will be the upcoming...
Actually, I would think at that point, the topic might have been the recent Mill Levy vote, rather than the upcoming one. That's my thinking, is I think we'd be wise to wait until after that Mill Levy vote so that we have a better idea of what our situation is. I don't have any other big reason for doing it, other than that there's really nothing that says we have to do it today, or tomorrow, or next week. And I'm just suggesting that this would be a good topic for us, perhaps, a little bit later on. And it'd be interesting to hear what some of the rest of you think about that. I'm not trying to put it off, or, I guess I am probably trying to put it off, but I don't have any big ulterior reason for doing that, other than that I think it might give us a little more time to consider it and might be more appropriate after a little more time.
Just giving it some thought, Paul, probably putting it after the Mill Levy vote, and just thinking aloud, perhaps, if we see that the Mill Levy vote wouldn't pass, perhaps it would be a good opportunity for the board to address compensation and actually reduce it at that point. Is it an opportunity to do it at that point as well?
I would agree with that, Rick, and, but that's why I think it's good to give it some time to take a look at it and see what's happening. And if the Mill Levy vote does not pass, we're gonna have to make some cuts all across the budget, and our compensation would certainly be one of them, I would think.
Chris?
I'm gonna amend the motion to... That we pass it tonight to be no more than the current, what it currently is, and to be revisited, perhaps, after...
Second.
So, now, we're discussing the amendment to the motion, which would be that the current compensation would not increase, but we would revisit the discussion after... I don't, yeah. I mean, I...
You want some clarification on that, or...
The boss on the side here says it's not true.
For an amendment, you need to either add words, strike words, or strike words or a combination of the both. So, we would need to work on that amendment for that motion.
I think the thing, okay, go ahead, Chris, and then...
Marian, can you, Anne Marie, I'm sorry, can you read the motion? Paul's motion.
I'll move to have the discussion about compensation taken up by governance to schedule it for a future meeting at our vote.
There, I was not suggesting that governance take up the topic of compensation, merely put it on a schedule at some time, rather than deciding tonight, "Okay, it's gonna be on this date." Let the committee come up with it.
I think if the consensus of the board is that they're not prepared to go either way on maintaining, increasing, or reducing, that if that's the wish of the board, then we'll take it back to governance and reschedule it appropriately. Chris, do you still want your motion, or do you...
I would clearly have to reword it so that it jibes with Paul's motion, but, and we don't know what the consensus of the board is right now.
Right.
Maybe it's my motion, but I'll rescind it.
Okay. Any other discussion about the main motion? Robin?
Anybody could bring this back to the board at any time without assigning, reassigning it now. So, a motion could come forth at any point during the year, which could essentially do the same thing, unless you want it as a placeholder, that's what I'm guessing.
You know, Robin, I'm okay, I mean, we don't have to specify governance. I know that sometimes when we have a motion to table it, some people don't get too excited about it, because they want to know, "Well, is this really ever gonna come back?" Or, "Who's gonna be in charge of coming back?" I wasn't real, I don't care when it comes back. I just think we'd be better off not to discuss this right now, is really all I'm saying. And if governance decides when, then governance decides when.
So, Paul, maybe I had to interpret your motion, you're actually making a motion to table the current motion, is what you're really saying.
It wasn't a motion on the floor, so my motion, in effect, tables the action, but it's not a motion to table.
John?
Madam President, I'm ready to vote now and stay where I'm at. I don't know that, we need to kick the can down the road, and I don't want to necessarily give mixed messages to the public to have them conjecture, "Well, if the Mill Levy vote goes this way, or if it goes this way, they're gonna turn around and raise their salaries." I think Rick's on target, that we hold it to where it is and stick to it and be prepared to tighten our belts if we need to after March. That's just where I'm at.
Else? Okay, all those in favor of rescheduling this discussion for a later date, chosen by governance, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Yeah, please.
Dean?
Aye.
Strand?
No.
Wallman? Boyd? Johnson?
Yes.
Myers? Nelson?
No.
Pachek?
Yes.
Goldenberg? Yes.
Motion passes. Back to governance. Thank you. Appointment to leave bank committee. So, a little background with this, there's always been a leave bank committee, but it hadn't been made clear that there was a board member who was supposed to be part of this committee. And an employee made a request in the last month since we met, and a board member was required, and I served in that capacity at the short notice. Apparently, this only happens sometimes, never, two, three times a year, since I already served in this capacity and know what it involves for this year. If everyone is willing, I'm gonna appoint myself to this committee, and then, going forward, starting in our new season, we'll have this as a standing assignment for board members, and the new president will assign appropriately. So, Robin?
Dinah, I move that we approve the appointment of Dinah to serve as the board representative on the leave committee.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, Rick?
In looking at the policy, is it really, maybe I'll ask the question, what's the purpose of having a board liaison on that committee? Is there a real reason for it, or is it just something that we've had in policy for some time? We did it last year, so we're just gonna...
No, it's in the contract, apparently.
In the contract?
It's in the teacher contract.
Okay.
And we've never had anyone on before, it was an oversight, but it's now been noticed, so that's why. So, I mean, and next, another negotiation session, that could be an issue, but...
Just a point of clarification, in the past, and I don't believe the leave bank committee has had to operate every year, but in the past, we have had board members serve on it. So, you will not be the first. Probably not the last, either.
But it was drawn to my attention, it was... Anyway, regardless of the background, this is, this is where the situation is. It's in the contract, and when these things come up, we need a board person. So, any other discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Odd to appoint oneself, but it just seemed the right thing to do in this circumstance. Monitoring of EL-15, Learning Environment and Discipline. Seven board members responded, and there is one comment on the very bottom under Thoughts on Possible Policy Changes, which we will address at governance. I think that's a good suggestion. Is there anyone else with any other comments regarding... Chris?
Thank you. My question is for Jeff, actually, for Dr. Schatz. I know that it's in the operational plan to review, there's a review of policies kind of cycling through. At what point, I'm a little hazy on this EL, because it says, "And the developing of policies." And does that include policy changes, from your perspective, or substantial policy changes? Or, I mean, how are you interpreting that?
When appropriate, depending on the policy, we would involve stakeholders, people that would be involved with that policy, and so, when it's significant changes, too. Most of the things that we've done in reviews have been a few word changes, a couple cleanup things, making sure citations are appropriate, and those kinds of things. So, at this point, we don't really have any policy review that is going through that extensive of a review, where we have a broad-based number of people involved, from different stakeholder groups.
Dr. Schatz, I'd just like to throw this out to other board members. You know, every year, we go to NDSBA, and the three main things that we're supposed to do as board members is look at the results, the superintendent, you know, we're responsible for that, and the third thing is policy. And policy doesn't, seldom comes to the board. I think in my board tenure, bullying is maybe the only one that's come to us, that I can think of off the top of my head. And I'm just wondering, I'm wondering if anybody else has input, because I don't know what committee this would go to, on the involvement that this board has with the tweaking, creation of policy. The person that thinks about policy.
Robin?
I think that speaks, that question's really tied to our belief and total commitment to policy governance, because we're following the policy governance model in most cases now, unless there's an extenuating circumstance. I think that might be the difference between what we practice and what the rest of the state...
The other, go ahead.
I was gonna say that, you know, there's always seemed like a somewhat of a disconnect, for me, anyway, with the way the ELs are monitored, because there's a summary response. And, you know, between a parent and student, and what happens at the building level, to us, it's sometimes it's quite a large gap. And, you know, there's obviously that change of command, but I will often have a parent ask me, you know, "Why does the policy say this, or why does the policy say that?" And I try to read most of them, but sometimes, I just don't know the answer. And so, I just, in terms of us being informed about what the policies say and what they look like when they're implemented at the building, I just was curious what everybody's sense was about our involvement. But certainly, getting in the weeds often causes more problems than it helps any.
I think there's two issues there. One is not wanting to get too involved in the weeds, but there's another piece, if we don't understand policies appropriately, and we're getting questions from our public. So, perhaps, we'll take that piece back to governance to see how that might be going forward.
Madam President, I wonder, too, if it would be possible that as the administration cycles through reviewing policies, if they might come to us. Our board meetings have been pleasantly brief, and I don't want to add too much to the plate, but just as a review for board members. And I don't want to, I don't want to get in the weeds, but it might be useful.
Well, we'll take that up at governance and see how we can best address that concern. Is that all right with everyone? But I need a motion now. Robin?
I move that we accept the statute of limitations, EL-15, Student Learning Environment and Discipline, as presented.
Did I hear a second? Okay. Oh, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed, same sign. Rick, did you put your hand up?
After this, our business is over.
Okay. Motion passed. Yes?
Madam President, I'd just like to bring up possibly another item of business for consideration. It's not on the agenda, but I don't think we're prohibited from doing that. Giving some thought and thinking about our NDSBA meetings and dealing with the other boards out there, and our board, and thinking about all the different things going on, when's the last time, or if ever, has a Fargo school board ever looked at the size of our board? We've got nine members on our board, and probably the largest, I know it's the largest board in the state. And I'm wondering if at some point in time, it wouldn't be appropriate for this board, and maybe through governance, to look at some of the other boards around the state, and what makes sense, and why nine is better than seven, because I think the most popular number out there is seven, as a board, and oftentimes, five. And so, I'm just thinking, I'd like to, I'd like to see at least governance take a look at, perhaps, bringing something back to the board in total, to either affirm we should be at nine board members, or perhaps, reducing the number of board members to seven.
Is there any additional support for this possibility? John?
Madam President, Rick, it's, I think that's an interesting topic, and it's one I've wondered about without knowing. Another thought people would put in there is if you're gonna have this discussion, maybe they would look at districts or wards, so that there's no sector of the city. I mean, just another explorative discussion of making sure every quadrant has representation, perhaps, as well as something to study.
Fish to weigh in on this at the moment?
I think maybe, you know, we wouldn't want to send it to governance unless there's some consensus that we should be looking at it. I'd like to, perhaps, find out if there's consensus, that at least governance should take a look at board size, and maybe even how its composition.
Yes, Robin?
I have a comment, then. So, what if, I would just like to know the history as to where the number nine came into the picture. So, maybe if we first hear the history, and then, at that point, determine if we should study it further.
Well, and I think that's, you know, give the whole thing to governance, come up with the history, why we're there, why nine, why not seven, how do we get, I mean, it could have been nine forever, as far as I know, since, since the district was put together back in, who knows when, but...
Well, I guess my question is, if there's, if there's enough consensus that we should move forward with this, then I would, would say that we would, governance would at least look at some of the history behind it and start there, and then decide exactly whether or not the history is clear enough that we don't want to change, or whatever the case is.
Well, there's history and current practice, and again, I look around the state, and, you know, at nine, we're by far and away the largest, we're the only district that I know with nine board members. I think most of them are seven at the most. So, I'm thinking, something to look at.
Well, we could definitely look into it. Paul, did you have something you wanted?
Yeah, I'm not against looking into it. I personally believe that nine is a good number, and that we don't have a problem with this, and that we could spend some time reviewing it and analyzing it, like we do with a lot of topics. But I think we have plenty of work to do. There's certainly never a shortage of things for us to stay on top of, and I think we represent, you know, our district is perhaps different from any of the districts in the state. So, I'm not gonna propose we get into a long discussion of it tonight. If Rick would like to bring it to a committee, I would respect that and say, "Let's have a committee take a look at it." And I'd vote in favor of that motion, if it is a motion, even though I might eventually vote against changing it.
I, I mean, I think for the purpose of sending it back to government, governance, if we have a consensus of the board, we don't need a motion, and we can discuss it at governance. So, just to make it simpler, show of hands for those who are in favor of further this topic and sending it to governance. I guess...
Is this a vote, or is it consensus?
A consensus, so do we, for consensus...
See, if I can add to it, and I, and this really kind of parlays off of Paul's earlier comment about board compensation, and whether we're gonna increase it, decrease, whatever we're gonna do. And so, I'm thinking in my head, well, we got perhaps two board members, in addition to what most boards have, and that's twenty-four thousand plus costs, I'm thinking on annual basis, doesn't sound like much, but if it's a pair, or it's an eight, or it's something else that, you know, down the road might, you know, we might look at, is maybe better, better use of the district's money, perhaps.
Okay, well, let's take this under advisement. We'll take it back to governance and at least have a preliminary discussion there about how and if we want to return this to the board.
That's all I ask.
Okay. Thank you. We're now at board reports. Start with Chris, and go around. Oh, nothing, sorry. Okay, Paul?
Had an opportunity to meet with the Washington PTA last evening, and that was fun. Had a great time. And we talked about the long-range facilities plan, and about the upcoming election, and basically had a chance to inform them of what's coming up. It wasn't a position-taking event, but it was nice to get a chance to talk to them, as we agreed we would do on, on the Communications Committee. And we also have a Dollars for Scholars meeting coming up this Thursday, that I'm looking forward to attending. And that's all I can remember at the moment.
I met with the Lincoln PTA last evening, similar, similar to Paul's meeting, went for, I think that went very well. Wanted to report one cool thing that they're doing, guarding before activity of walking, fifteen minutes of walking, and they pair up fourth and fifth graders.
Well, I, too, was at a PTA meeting last night.
Could have sounded like a broken record.
At Lewis &amp; Clark. And great questions. As far as Communications Committee goes, our next meeting is February 13th. Anne Marie and Betsy have worked really hard on putting together some, some very basic information pieces, so need to thank them publicly. And also, they're gonna be coming back with, I think, I feel it's, and they feel it's the district's responsibility to let the public know about polling places and those basic general information pieces on the election. So, they're gonna kind of come up with a timeline as to when they intend to roll those out. So, we'll, we'll learn more on February 13th.
Very good. Jim?
For those of you on GAC, we're meeting tomorrow morning, 7:30, someplace... Place on the second floor. Those of you that are not on GAC, you'll be receiving a follow-up email from GAC with a short list of area legislators that we are hoping you will contact, offer to have an informational session as to what the measure on the ballot is all about. So...
John?
Madam President, I'm, I'm booking a few, in fact, both of my liaison schools are happening at the same time, so Dinah's covering for me at Centennial, but a question I'm trying to sort through in my head, as I am going to be going publicly to the PTAs, is I don't want to overstep what my hat is as a board member in my positioning or information sharing versus my... or information sharing versus my personal opinions. And is there a guideline sheet anywhere? Or could we maybe have a couple minutes at the board, just so that...
Your guideline is you don't give them your personal opinion. And the PowerPoint, have you had a chance, is very informational. And you can also, I've done three of these already, make it perfectly clear to them that you are there to give them facts and information, and that as staff and school board members, we are not allowed to share a pro or con in a public setting where we're standing up for the board.
And then personally, Madam President, we...
If you meet somebody in the grocery store on a personal note, that's...
I'm just cautious.
Yeah. And I've been cautioning people all along, and actually, I had a couple of questions. I, too, was at a, I was at Kennedy last night, and a couple of the questions were a little iffy, and I prefaced my answers by saying exactly what I just said, that I'm not, I can't give you, you know, answer that really, because that would appear to be my personal opinion, and I can't tell you that. And I can't give you an answer that indicates pro or con, or I can give you the facts. So I know it's a fine line, and it's hard, but I think if you come up with that initially, and the PowerPoint itself is really just facts, so I think you'll be fine. Any other?
Nope.
Rusty? Rick?
Planning had this last meeting on January 3rd, went over quite a few topics. HVAC update from Brock, we're out with that, and that's moving along as far as the design is going. We had an update regarding the second street warehouse building and the flood wall, and how that's likely going to impact us on that. The mill levy notices were out, I believe, on a timely basis for the vote. Walked through the budget process, the upcoming budget process, and Brock brought us up to speed on the process there, and we also had a short and brief update on the Edclap School, where that is at. Our next planning meeting was scheduled for February 7th, but Brock has a conflict with that date, and so we're having to reschedule that. We're looking currently at February 4th. We're trying to just follow the governance committee meeting, so we don't have to make a couple of trips in for some of the people. And right now, the one that I think has gotten Mac is Rusty's, that he cannot make that meeting. Still trying to see if we can get a quorum. I don't think we've got a huge amount of topic on the agenda, but, so if we can get a quorum for the 4th, we'd sure like to try to get that meeting in before for the board meeting.
Thank you. President's report. You've already heard that I've been to three schools to discuss the LFP and the mill levy, Davies, Discovery, and Kennedy, and three more to do in the coming weeks. And all of them went really well, great questions, and also really good response to the presentation itself. I think that the, kudos again to the communications committee, and to Anne Marie and her team, which reminds me, I forgot to ask you. Sorry about that. For putting, helping to put that together. And at Discovery especially, they loved the photos. They were, oh, that's our kids, that's our kids. So that was really fun. So, but anyway, it really well received. So I think any of you who haven't had the opportunity to do it yet, will find that the folks are really positive and ask good questions, and are really interested, too. So I also attended today, was invited to a PAVE kickoff. Now, PAVE is short, is the acronym for Peer Advocates Voices and Power. And it is a fabulous idea of a program. Just to give you the brief outline, it pairs disabled students with traditional students to be advocates for them in their middle schools. So disabled students who may be bullied, or mistreated by other students, or whatever, this is a peer advocate program. And I went to the kickoff today, and they have about eight students in the class, and about three or four advocates per child. There's a parent in Minot who felt a need for this kind of program, and wrote a grant, and there are three schools in the state, one in Fargo, one in Bismarck, and one in Williston, that got the grant to train these kids to do this program. So it was really exciting to hear about it, and to see the kids interacting. So today was just the beginning of this training. And Linda Davis is very, the principal at Discovery, is really excited about how this will translate, not just with this specific population, but how these kids will be better educated to, you know, report, and recognize, and stand up for their friends, whether they happen to be disabled or not. So it really sounded like a great program. So I'm sure, I told them that once that it was more established, and they had a report, that we certainly, at the board level, would be interested in hearing more about it, so... And your little homework piece at the bottom here is, we're trying to avoid the district paying for expenses that are not incurred. So if your plans change at all regarding the National School Boards Convention, there's some dates here that are important in terms of us getting our deposits back, or canceling our hotels and everything. So I just wanted to make you all aware of that, so if you have anything come up, you can try and do it within that timeframe. And I think that's it. Unbelievable. The next meeting is January 28th, and we are at debriefing. Anyone? Thank you, Robyn. And all these great gifts we got tonight, I didn't mention, thank you. Anyway, anything for debriefing? John, did, any special reports today?
Not...
Okay, not tonight. Okay. Wow, unbelievable. Probably a record. Thank you so much. Meeting adjourned. Okay.